And we will now call this meeting to order. As usual, we will start with our prayer and our pledges. And we have Lorenzo Hatch from the Police Department here to lead us in.
Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you. Thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. In the Scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of San Angelo. And finally, Father, please bless and protect our public servants of the Fire and Police Department. We ask this in all things through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one equal, founded in justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God.
This morning, we will start off with our first proclamation. And so those who are here with the Developmental Disabilities Awareness Organization, please come forward. Come on up here. Don't be afraid. Maybe some of you would like to stand a little more over to the left. Okay? And the tall individuals in the back? Since 1987, the month of March has been recognized as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month to celebrate and uplift those living with disabilities and highlight their many contributions to our society. Today, there are nearly 500,000 children and adults living in Texas with a developmental disability. Through collaborative inclusivity within our community, people with developmental disabilities can achieve their full potential, as each person has unique perspectives, experiences, and abilities that can positively shape the development and future of San Angelo. Individuals that live in our community deserve the opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive. Individuals with disabilities can live independent and productive lives with the proper access to supportive services and when they are fully included in all aspects of community life. In schools, children excel academically when they participate alongside their peers, developing critical thinking and social skills. When people with disabilities are included in the workforce, they can be a part of a team and diversify businesses. Our city flourishes due to the diversity of people, and we can all raise awareness about how we are a stronger community when we support those with disabilities. In collaboration with MHMR Concho Valley, the local Intellectual and Developmental Disability Authority, LITA, we dedicate March to raising awareness about developmental disabilities and advocating for inclusivity within our community. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month and encourages everyone to learn about how creating an equitable future for those with developmental disability improves and strengthens classrooms, businesses, and houses of worship.
And thank you, City Council. MHMR greatly appreciates your support. And because we couldn't do what we do for folks in the community without your support. We serve over 950 people with developmental disabilities annually. That's of the 7,000 folks we serve. That is a whole lot of folks in our community's long-term care and a lot of advocacy, a lot of coordination of services, a lot of residential supports. And I always like to come and not only thank everyone, but I like to highlight our wonderful basketball and cheerleaders, the Concho Valley Bobcats. This is our month. These guys, they train real hard, they work real hard, and they've got pep rally coming up, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, and then Friday is the big game. Howard College in Big Springs, where we play a whole bunch of other community centers. They're awesome. They have a halftime show with the cheerleaders, the basketball team. We play in the bracket that's more competitive, and we're going to go after it again this year. I've got so many, I don't know if I can name them all, but I want to recognize Coach Rita over at the end. She's been doing this for quite some time. And at the other end is Audrey. She coordinates all of the cheerleaders in routine. So thank you so much for all you do. Thank you for supporting MHMR and what we do to help our community. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Would you like that? Okay, well, let's kind of get behind. Join me. Those of you who are in the audience representing the school, please come forward. You're perfect, okay? Good. San Angelo State Supported Living Center was originally opened in 1912 as a state sanatorium to rehabilitate Texans suffering from tuberculosis. In 1969, the facility was converted to a supported living center, and in 1988 started their emphasis on intellectual disability care. Today, the living center is home to 140 individuals with intellectual, mental, and physical disabilities. Residents range in age from 14 years to 95 years young. Residents learn life skills, gardening, drawing, painting, pottery, woodworking, and computer skills. The younger residents attend public school, and many residents hold jobs on and off campus. Founded in 1973, the Volunteer Services Council is comprised of volunteers of the community that care about people with intellectual and mental disabilities and work to bring awareness to their mission of providing goods and services to enhance the quality of life for individuals living at the San Angelo SSLC. The BSC provides residents with birthday lunches, outings in the community, clothing, Christmas presents, and events on campus. Artfully Able, an art exhibit showcasing residents' art and woodwork, is just one of the community events hosted by BSC each year. The BSC strives to bring joy to every resident's life and to share their abilities with the community. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize and applaud San Angelo State Supported Living Center and the Volunteer Services Council for bringing a quality life of care to individuals with disabilities that are an integral part of our community. Who would like to come forward and speak today? Here's your proclamation. Please.
Thank you all for this. We do love our job. We love taking care of our residents. We have a few that came with us today. They participate in Special Olympics, music festivals, proms, so they're excited to be here to see all you as well, but thank you again.
Let me say this correctly. I'm going to try. Lambredinas. Say it louder. There we go. The European Union Ambassador, Stavos Lambredinas, has endorsed and promoted the cultural linkages between the European Union and the City of San Angelo, Texas. Ambassador Lambredinas, in a bold gesture of international goodwill, opened the European Union's ambassadorial residence to award-winning art from the San Angelo Museum of Fine Arts, which include artworks that showcase Texas and American artistic creativity in styles from surrealism, minimalism, American regionalism, and impressionism. The city recognizes and applauds the ambassador for his unique approach to the promotion of goodwill between the citizens of the European Union and San Angelo by utilizing the arts and humanities in a groundbreaking approach to international diplomacy. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby confer upon the European Ambassador honorary citizen in the City of San Angelo, Texas. Thank you. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the DAs, begin by stating their name and address or single member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Anybody here who would like to offer public comment today?
I just wanted to say that I wanted to ask the City Council if they would postpone voting on number six in the regular agenda, item A, regarding the Memorial River Stage changes or improvements, renovations? Because this afternoon at four, there will be a town hall to discuss the accessibility of the river stage and other parks and rec items. And so I was wondering if you could pull that from the agenda and wait to vote on it until you get feedback from the community on their needs? Because there are some issues with that facility. Then the second thing I wanted to say was, I think that San Angelo Advocacy for Access Group has made strides with the city manager and his city directors with the improvements for accessibility, and I want to applaud them for doing so, but...
Wait a minute. We're discussing an item that's on the regular agenda, so are we supposed to even be doing this during public comment?
I think she's moved on from the river stage conversation, but...
But that's not right, because that's on the regular agenda.
Right, but as long as she's not continuing... Are you going to continue to talk about the river stage right now?
No.
Okay. She has other comments she wants to make, I believe.
And not be focused on the river stage.
Oh, okay. Do I get my time back? Okay. Sorry, I had moved on. I had two things. This is number two. Okay, so, do I go now? Okay. So we've made strides, right, between discussions and changes for accessibility? However, I feel like we've made like four steps forward, and maybe now we're making a couple steps back? Because the city attorney has been appointed the ADA coordinator now, just in... I know it's interim, because we're going to be hiring, hopefully, if you guys approve it in the next year's budget, we'll be hiring an ADA coordinator, which is great, who will have the right qualifications and such. But as you guys know, things happen later on. At least that's what I'm hoping for. So, you know, it takes time to get that on the books. However, having the city attorney as the point person for people with disabilities to make a complaint to the city is really not a best practice. In fact, it's not even a practice throughout the disability world. And it kind of causes people not to want to submit a grievance. And so I'm just kind of asking if that could be changed and looked at again, because it's really not fitting for the city attorney to be the ADA coordinator, whether it's interim or not. Thank you.
Were there public comment? Public's quiet today.
I have a public comment. We have a public forum, as was mentioned this evening, at 4:30 till 6:00 in council chambers right here in this room, on the accessibility of our Parks and Recreation Program. That is part of our self-assessment process that we're going through right now. We are seeking input on ways that we can better serve all of our citizens. We're also taking comment through info@cosatx.us. If you're not comfortable coming to a meeting, or you want to maintain some sort of confidentiality, we don't require you to put your name on those comments, but just put ADA comment in the subject line, so we know that that is intended to be something that's addressed tonight at our meeting. And there also going to be a live stream tonight, so if people just want to comment in the comment section on the live stream, that is also appropriate.
Public comment continues.
Good morning. I'm Service Member District Number Three. I would also like to request that we pull the agenda item 6A regarding the river stage, and I won't make any further comments on that except for the fact, what Andrea stated, that we are going to be having a town hall about it tonight. And we were promised that the city would ensure that they would refer to the disability community before making any major decisions regarding projects like this. I'd also like the city, I would like to encourage the city to review the ADA in regards to tickets to events. I was informed, and then I verified, that to purchase accessible tickets for the rodeo, you must go in person. And when you review the ADA, you'll see that tickets to events must be available for purchase the same way that everyone else gets their tickets. And before you say it's not your event, or you're not responsible, keep in mind, city facilities and funds are being used for the rodeo, so it does make you responsible. And I would highly encourage changing that, not that there's any tickets left, but keep that in mind. The ADA coordinator thing, as Andrea talked about, it is intimidating for a lot of people. Imagine all the phone calls if you were to get every day, being a city council member. If those all had to go through the city attorney, how many phone calls would you still get? Because people are uncomfortable. But I do appreciate the fact that she most likely is the most capable person right now within the city to manage the ADA, and we want to make sure that we're doing it right. However, from the beginning, we haven't been. The ADA requires that there be a public announcement, service announcement, that the ADA coordinator has been designated or changed, and that was not done. So I encourage, again, to review the ADA and do that as well. If anything, continue, I'm going to continue to encourage the city be transparent about the ADA and share with the public that you understand that the city is behind and you're making efforts to address that. Additionally, the city website states that citizens have 25 days from the date of noticing a concern to file a grievance. Again, I recommend reviewing the ADA. It requires 180 days, and I confirm that with a couple different ADA experts as well. Giving someone 25 days when they're already uncomfortable with a situation and have never before spoken up, because there wasn't really a strong process, and requiring or allowing them to only have 25 days is not reasonable, but it's also not legal. And the last thing, we are working hard. San Angelo Advocacy for Access, we have a trifold now, so we're getting pretty serious. But we are working hard, and we're working with members of the city, we're working with businesses, the chamber, and other organizations. But we were told that one of our first recommendations, which was to develop a mayor's committee on people with disabilities, is not possible right now, because we were told the city doesn't know what's needed for that committee. But since then, I have made a new friend, and he is a person who is deaf, and he was actually on the San Angelo Mayor's Committee on People with Disabilities. He also was awarded the San Angelo Person with Disability of the Year, not just within San Angelo, but also for the state of Texas, among other awards from presidents and governors. So it is possible. If we can do it 30 years ago, then we can do it now. And so I highly recommend to take our efforts and the people that we are serving seriously. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to point out very briefly, I know the request has been made by two individuals now, as far as pulling item A. It's actually a direction item from the City Council. There'll be a presentation will be made. A decision won't be made from City Council, but it'll just be a direction item. So I do recommend that we leave it on there for now.
I agree with you. We will open it up for a presentation and not necessarily action.
That's correct.
Or we can take action with the ability to adjust any actions appropriately.
Mayor, I'd like to make two clarifications. First, I haven't been formally designated as the ADA coordinator. That will happen at the next meeting. It didn't happen at this meeting, because spring break and all of that happened. But the information has changed on our website, so I am taking those kinds of information. And second, we are planning on doing a committee for citizens to help us with these ADA issues. And tonight at the meeting, there will be a call for people who are interested, for citizens who are interested, to provide their information to me, so we can set up that committee. What we're not going to be doing is making a formal board that's in our code of ordinances and that is, you know, has all the rules of open meetings and all of those sorts of things. But we are still intending on doing a committee.
Were there public comment? Tom?
So just a little bit of reply. I helped a lady, you don't have to go in person, you can actually call the box office at San Angelo Stock Show Rodeo, 486-1400. And I purchased, helped a lady purchase two handicap tickets just this week. So just to make sure that's clear, I know that's not us, it's not the City of San Angelo, but I was able to call the number, and I just verified the phone number, they have a box office. And you'll, what you have to do, it's better if you go in person, because you can work around some companion seats to go with that. But just so you know, box office number for that is 486-1400.
Were there public comment? Seeing none, we will move into our consent agenda. Are there items from the consent agenda that City Council would like to pull? Larry? Karen?
No ma'am.
Lucy?
No ma'am.
Tom?
I mean, Harry?
No ma'am.
Tom?
No ma'am.
Tommy?
No ma'am.
Okay. May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So move.
A motion by Harry. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tommy. Any public comment concerning any of the agenda items, I mean, the consent items on the agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda approved, 7-0. We will move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is direction from City Council on proposed improvements and renovations to the Bill Ayler Senior Memorial River Stage. And we have our civic events manager, Sidney Walker, here to present today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor, good morning, council, good morning, city manager. Here to discuss the Bill Ayler Senior Memorial River Stage proposed improvements. So our Bill Ayler Senior Memorial River Stage, of course, is named after Mr. Bill Ayler. He was a music man in the city of San Angelo. He was very influential in building, having the river stage built, and the river stage was built in 1987. So I came here myself in 2002 as an airman, Goodfellow Air Force Base. In 2004, I started throwing concerts, because I noticed there was a lack of concerts to come to San Angelo, Texas. In 2008, I was able to throw my first concert at the Bill Ayler Senior Memorial River Stage. We had 1,200 people in attendance. The same Bill Ayler Senior Memorial River Stage that we have today is what I dealt with in 2008 as well. So we're definitely in need of maintenance, renovations, coming up to code with ADA compliance. All these issues we'll definitely get to with this presentation. This is a chance for us to make sure that we can grow our river stage into where we should see it in the future, and this is that opportunity for us to make sure we can improve these areas too, that we definitely need to take care of. There's three sets of customers that we deal with at the river stage. There's the promoter, there's the artists, and there's also the customers that come through the door. Those three customers, whenever we talk about the needs for it, these needs are going to hit one of those or each one of them. So here's our river stage that we have, is located at 16 East Avenue A. As you can see on the left-hand side, that's our loading dock that we have. Our dressing room is pretty small, of course, but it's our dressing room A. And then also on this side, on this small corner right here, these panels go in the back of the river stage. The bottom is rusted out, so we haven't been able to put those panels back up as well. This is what we're looking at moving forward with the river stage, the actual staging area, is adding an additional production office. This will help out with the promoters. Expanding our green room as well will be something for our artists as well. New storage addition is definitely needed, so we can be able to store the chairs and tables that we do have at our facility. A new covered dock, whenever artists and bands are bringing in their equipment, this is where they would be able to bring it in at. ADA accessible toilet, as well as a new accessible ramp too, as well in the front area, and then a new storage area too, as well for any additional items that we need. And then we do have our existing green room as well, and then our mechanical room too. Some of the proposed renovations that we're looking at is an interior remodel of the river stage itself, and then additional new storage wing that you see right there. We're also looking at expanding the terrace area too as well. This would be in this area. And then also the new irrigation that's much needed at the river stage. Also, we're looking at expanding the ticketing and concessions, which is located in this area. Right now, it's just a real tight squeeze for us in that area, so expanding that will definitely help us out. And also expanding the new entry plaza and food canopy by the stage too as well, where the initial entrance is. We're also looking at... We're also looking at adding multiple mini concession stands, a new covered dock, and upgrading the HVAC as well, fixing some of the drainage issues that we do have at the River Stage, and improving those sidewalks and relocating the fencing area. Some of the ADA improvements that we're looking at-
Sidney, would you go back to that slide? Because one of the other things that I hear a lot about is the level drive for buses, which is a major issue.
Yes, ma'am. So the level drive for buses, of course, most artists that are coming into the city are coming on buses these days. Last year, for March, in our concert, when Ice Cube came to the city, he left us his muffler on his bus, because he could not get down to the area, so-
Did he all graffit?
It was, I, I, I didn't think about it in time, but when he did, that was his first initial entrance to the River Stage. And, I mean, his bus driver was very upset at the time. But it is an issue that we do need to look at due to, due to buses. It's definitely, though, a serious issue that we need to look at. It needs to be leveled off a little bit better, due to, that's how artists are now coming in these days, they're not flying into San Angelo, everybody's taking their bus.
Sid?
Yes.
Just for my benefit, is there a key that you could give us to what the different colors represent? The red, the blue, the brown, et cetera, that would-
Yes, so all your-
Maybe help me a little bit?
So the, so basically, your red areas that we do have on there is all the additional areas that we're looking at trying to add to our River Stage. The brown area is what's existing already for the River Stage, and we will talk about the other entrance in my next slide and stuff too, as well. I'll bring that up. Some of the ADA improvements that we're looking at is doing accessible walkways, as well as improving accessibility to the stage and to the back of the stage. We do not have that so far, right now, to be ADA compliant, as well as accessible elements in the dressing room bathrooms, as well. We're also looking to improve bathroom reach ranges, and adding accessible toilet stalls and lavatories as well. We're also wanting to modify the counter heights at the ticket window in the concession areas, and provide accessibility routes to the box office and to the concession areas for the River Stage, and also improve the viewing areas for ADA improvements as well. Any questions on that? Some of the proposed alternate renovations that we're seeking is actually having a new bathroom building. This would be located here on, just on the west side, right here. Those bathroom buildings right there would definitely be key for us, whenever you do have people that's sitting in that terrace area, or on the reserved seating area, to be able to get to those a lot faster than having to go all the way back up the hill and go to the original bathrooms that we do have. We're also looking at a new concession building. That new concession building would be key too, as well, because right now, we can only do hot foods in this area over here. It would be great if we could do hot foods in another area. All the mini concession stands, those are just for bar areas, we can't keep hot food in those areas. And then a new main entry and ticketing. This entry would be off of Avenue A, would be coming down over in this area right here. This is all conceptualized as well, too. The plaza, we would be sharing the use with the pool, and this would be an accessible route to the plaza level as well. And we would also be sharing a pavilion with, with pool, with rec, parks and rec as well. New shade canopy, which would go in this area right here. This would be over the reserved seating area. This would definitely help out on those hot sunny summer days that we do have at the River Stage, plus we would be able to increase the fee of our facility fee in that area too, as well. And then adding digital signage off of Chadbourne would help let people know what concerts, what events we do have coming to the city of San Angelo, and any other advertisement that we would like to put on that, on that signage. Here's our proposed phases. So in year one, we're looking at the green area. That would take care of the base of the River Stage as well, getting all of our ADA compliant issues taken care of, as well as adding the terrace, the terrace area for people to be able to sit at as well, and remodeling the existing restrooms that we do have in, at the River Stage. Year two would be in the gold, and that would be the additional of the alternate canopy, and all the alternate routes that we're looking to add to as well, and the concession and women's, adding the concessions and men's and women's restroom as well. Some of the estimated project costs for us, for the first year, would be a million point six, million point six. And year one, our proposed funding sources, we would want to relocate, reallocate our funding source for the convention center renovations project, from the civic events fund to the hotel occupancy tax, that's approximately $700,000. And then our civic events fund balance over 90 days would be at $208,000 as well, and having a contribution from the general fund would be approximately $160,000. In year two, the estimated project cost would be $3.7 million, and that would, we're hoping the proposed funding for that would be from our potential general debt service fund, and also from the future departmental revenue as well. That would include our facility fees that we received, that we put back into our facilities already, too. Our civic events advisory board did approve of us moving forward with trying to renovate the River Stage upon city council's direction for funding source. If you all have any questions, I'm open for discussion.
Well, what I'd like to say is the following, is that the River Stage is one of our greatest assets. We are so privileged to have a river that runs through our downtown area. We have spent money to really improve the river experience, the walkways, we've done a great job doing that. What we've ignored, for all kinds of reasons, is this River Stage. And what I hear from people when they are putting on concerts, or getting ready to put on some event there, many of the issues that you just talked about have been addressed. And our ability really maximize the River Stage really requires us to make this kind of an investment. And we know in year one, we have the funding identified that can pay for those events. I believe that the number of people who will continue to look at using the River Stage will be dramatically increased, based off of even year one improvements. People continually complain about the dressing facilities, that ramp, buses cannot get down that ramp without destroying the undercarriage of the bus. We do know that the situation, when you have 110 degrees, day after day after day, people don't like to sit in patches of stickers, dry dirt and stickers. And that's what we're asking them to do right now, is sit in dirt and stickers. We can't continue to call this an asset of the city if we don't make some investment in this asset. And it is truly a great asset for us here in San Angelo.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've heard all the complaints from the bands. The quality does not exist for them to want to be here. People, ticket sales are impacted by the lack of quality entertainment at the River Stage. So I think it's, I think we, as a council, need to identify a game plan and start this process.
Yes, ma'am.
So I feel strongly that we need to approve this, and start moving forward on making this the great facility that it can be.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes, Harry?
Excuse me, sir.
No, Harry, I addressed Harry first.
Are with me?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, Sid, and Civic Events, for putting this presentation together. You know, when you got a venue that's 25 years old, 26 now, you gotta invest some funds in it, so-
36.
36, yeah.
36, oh. Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to take my age down a few years. Thank you. What the mayor said is absolutely correct. This is right in the middle of District Three, and I don't find, see a better way to utilize funds than to try to upgrade this facility for future concerts, for the comfort of the people that come and support those concerts. So, I, I agree with the mayor, we need, we need to do this. The only thing I would do is, is I would take another look, possibly after tonight's session, to see whether or not we've appropriated, appropriately put all of the ADA stuff in there. And I'm sure you have, but I just want to make sure we can do that. But I support this.
Larry?
Are you going to be available for the 4:30 meeting this afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I know the community, the ADA community out there has some serious problems with, still with access.
Yes, sir.
So thank you very much for being there.
No problem.
Yes, Tommy. Tom?
Sidney, I mean-
Well, don't be so exasperated. It's not such a bad, it's not such a bad thing.
So as y'all look at this, and you look at it tonight, even in the purpose and the scope of ADA, we're not looking just to catch up, we're looking to go for the next 50 years. So please keep that in mind, and I'm sure y'all are, I just, I have said in situations where people make the step to, this is good today, this is great, and in three years, we're great. But I mean, you know, we also need to have point of sale, we need to have the same functions to do anywhere, where, as you see, our population is moving, the younger group, to do all that, just keep in mind our scope, that we need to be thinking 30 years in the future beyond this, and we don't want to come back to it, you know, and have to make some really substantial, because, so I'm, I'm not quite clear on the funding. It's 1.066 million the first year, and then 3.7 the second, or is that the total, is the 3.7?
Oh, sir, it's, it would be 1.6 million in the first year, 3.7 in the, in the second year.
The second year's another 3.7, so we're looking at nearly 5 million when we get on that.
Yes, sir.
You know, when you look at it, and you do not invest in something for 30-some years, the price tag grows dramatically. And we either make an investment in the River Stage, or don't consider it an asset and stop using it as one. People want this River Stage. There are many cities who would love the opportunity to have the river, as well as the River Stage. And I suggest that as part of this, where we've taken a look at a lot of private-public partnerships, that we look at the opportunity for naming rights, and look at public investment or interest level in this project, so that we can, we're certainly fine year one, we've identified the areas where there's existing money, but we're going to need to dig deep and find the opportunity for public-private partnership to meet the 3.7 million dollars. And I know there's some naming rights that can happen here.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, it's a wonderful asset, so we've got a little bit of time to invest in that and do it. And I also look forward to hearing people's comments tonight about the ADA presentation that you're going to be able to talk to, and, so that we all better understand that. Any further public comment, or comment from city council? All right, so do we need to take a vote on this today?
No, just direction at this point. I think we've got, from here and from city council members at this point, I think we have our direction. It sounds like we really want to move forward. We do need to listen to the ADA meeting this afternoon, ensure that we are incorporating those discussions into what we have in here as well, but I believe we have the direction right now.
And we can start the process of looking for naming rights. It looks like particularly in year two, there's some facilities that would be ideal for naming rights. And let's move forward with that concept. Okay?
Thank you. Sid?
Item B, consider approving the following items pertaining to the 2023 Annual Seal Coat Project. One is consider entering into, enter local agreement with Tom Green County, and amending the fiscal year 2022-23 budget for the corresponding reimbursed expense. And item B two, consider awarding ES-01-23 2023 Annual Seal Coat Project to Ronald R. Wagner Company in the amount of $7,446,348.63, utilizing $100,000 from the hotel occupancy fund balance, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Okay, you're on.
Morning, mayor and council. This item is the final year of our, of council's eight-year goal for city staff to seal coat every street in San Angelo. Very proud, very privileged to say that we have accomplished that goal at the end of this season. So, that was a huge commitment by council, and we appreciate that support in getting our street infrastructure, the maintenance that it needed in these past eight years. Definitely have an agenda and a goal to continue that, from staff's perspective, be a little proactive in that, and continue to improve that infrastructure. So I wanted to first say thank you to council for that support in making this happen. The reason that this is on the regular agenda, instead of just on the consent, was A, to say that, and B, because this is the second year of our alignment with the, the Tom Green County, and to expand the scope of this work, and hopefully to generate some, some economies of scale between the two entities. So we have done that, this is the second year. We did see some very favorable pricing as it came down. It did take up just a little bit from, from last year's cost, a couple pennies, but a couple pennies over, in today's environment, is not that much. So, we were very happy with the numbers that came in. We're going to finalize our streets, as well as get the county some well-needed attention to their roadways as well with this item. There is a third component to this, is the parking lot out here at the convention center, that's where you see the hotel occupancy tax funds, going to help improve this parking lot, so that we have a sustained facility for parking outside this, this building as well.
Are there questions for Patrick? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Harry, second by Tommy. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving the regular agenda, item B, please say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven, zero. Item C, discuss and consider adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sell of the City of San Angelo, Texas Tax Note Series 2023, and enacting other provisions related thereto. And Tina, you're on on this one.
Thank you, mayor. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. I'm just, a quick reminder on what the proposed projects are for this debt issue, approximately $1.6 million at the animal shelter, and approximately $303,000 for traffic light at Twin Mountain Lane and Knickerbocker. So, we're issuing approximately $2 million. I think the final actual number, once we got in our bids, was $1,995 for the actual number. The note will mature August 15, 2023, and this is a one-time funding source from the debt service fund. The notes were offered directly to local and national banks. The bids were received on this past Friday, and we'll receive the proceeds on April 6, and the winning bid came from JP Morgan at 5.781%. We did have three bidders, and they were the lowest bidder. And that's all I have as far as presentation, but if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer those as well.
Questions for Tina? I have a question. So, on the issue of available funds to use, was there any opportunity, use any of ARPA funds for investment in this project?
Yes, we could use ARPA funds for this project, but the funds that we're using can only be used for debt service, and so that's why we're using those funds at this time.
Okay. Further questions from council? Then may I have a motion for approval? So move by Tommy, second by Larry. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven, zero. Item D, consider approving tax increment reinvestment zone tiers incentive funding for a private project for a nonprofit entity in the north tiers area for the property located at 1720 Martin Luther King Drive totaling $71,845. And you're on, John.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is another tiers project request, 1720 Martin Luther King Drive. The funding requested, as you can see there, is about $71,000. They are providing the required match for the project. You'll see some pictures in a minute, but the summary of the work is some paving, mostly facade improvements, and a little bit of lighting. The north funds that are available, this number's a little out of date, but it's about 1.8 million. With some of the recent projects that you all approved at a recent meeting, that's down a little bit, but it's in the ballpark of 1.6, 1.7 million. So, plenty of funds, we're trying to get projects going in the north, and we've had some success. As you saw, we brought to you a number of projects a couple of meetings ago. We've already got three more projects on the next tiers board meeting, so we're being more successful at getting north projects to come forward. This project, here's just some existing pictures of the, of the building, and showing how it needs some pavement work, some building facade improvements to help improve the appearance of both the building and the larger area. of both the building and the larger area, as you'll see was one of the discussions of the tiers board itself. So this is a nonprofit organization, a church owns this facility. As you know, our current policy, you all have suggested that the tiers board revisit this policy, which they've had some discussions already. They wanted another discussion at their next meeting, and so once, once they finalize their recommendation on that, we'll bring that to you all, but under the current policy, at least in the north area, nonprofit organizations are eligible. There are some stipulations to that, which is why I included this language from the policy. So it does require that both the tiers board and the council make a finding that there's a significant economic impact that will be created as a result of the project, and also it does require a three-fourths majority vote of the entire board and the entire council. As you'll see, the tiers board did vote this in a way, they approved it with that three-fourths majority, but it does require a three-fourths majority of the council as well to approve it. As I mentioned, the tiers board did recommend funding by a vote of seven to one, which does meet that three-fourths majority requirement. I will note that there was some confusion on an earlier vote of this at the tiers board, but the policy does require a three-fourths majority of the entire board, and so at that meeting, we didn't have a full board contingent there, and so while it was a three-fourths majority, on the first vote, it was three-fourths majority approved of the members there, it was not a three-fourths majority of the entire board. So this did go back to the board for reconsideration with more members, and it did get that, that vote. But as you'll see, the board has nine members, one was still absent, but again, seven out of the total nine members is, does meet that three-fourths. And so the determination by the tiers board regarding the significant economic impact, they had quite a bit of discussion, and at the end of the day, they decided that improving a nonprofit, a church building, helps basically improve the entire area. So businesses around this area would, it would benefit the entire area, basically by saying, why would a business want to improve next door to a church that, that looks like it needs much improvement, and so by improving the church, it might encourage adjacent property owners to also improve their properties. And so that's the basic justification for the board voting to approve this funding for a nonprofit. That's really an overview of what the board recommended, so this does come to you with the recommendation of the tiers board for funding this. I would just add again that the current policy does allow funding of nonprofits, and so while I know you, some of you have expressed an opinion about not funding nonprofits, under the current policy that is allowed, that doesn't mean you have to approve it, but the, the policy has not changed as of, as of now.
Define what tiers, what tiers means. What's it created from?
Tax increment reinvestment zone, and so the, the basic idea is that you funnel money into a specified area to help improve that area, well, to, ultimately to raise the property values and make improvements in those areas, which results in an increase in taxes. I will note that the board had a significant discussion on that, because there, particularly the one board member who voted against it, did make the point that this does not create any new tax revenue for the city by improving it, but again, the board's, at the end of the day, the board's decision was, this will help improve the overall area, which will help further investment in a larger area, and that's why they felt comfortable approving it. I guess one final note, the board did make an initial recommendation on funding for nonprofits. Five board members voted to keep the allowance for nonprofits, three were against it, and the only reason I bring that up now, because they do want to discuss it more, but there were two members who voted basically for eliminating nonprofits, but also voted for this project, and so part of their thinking was, under the current policy, it's allowed, they thought that there was a good case made for it, so they voted for it, while also not supporting funding future nonprofits. So that, just wanted to give you some of that background of what some of them were thinking, that they generally don't support funding nonprofits, but because it's in the current policy, they were comfortable approving it.
Daniel, you want to make comment on what property tax dollars and sales tax dollars are used for in the City of San Angelo?
Just for clarification, I know that, I saw John touch on just a little bit. When you look at the tiers monies that do come in, it's funded, tiers is funded by property tax revenues. There's a contribution that goes in, there's a base amount that's established, and then there's an incremental amount that, that goes up on an annual basis based on values. That incremental amount from property taxes goes into the tiers fund in order to fund tiers. The, the argument has been that nonprofits do not contribute whatsoever to that tiers fund, because they don't pay property taxes. And there's a rub with, with many folks as well, is that how can a group receive money if in fact that same entity is not even contributing toward the revenues of the tiers, of the tiers monies? So that's, that's something to be considered. I do understand as far as the, the view, I'm kind of confused that you had three individuals that were, were opposed to funding, but yet chose to fund this one. That wouldn't have been the three-quarters majority. In order for the city, city council to approve this, we would need six council members to approve this moving forward. But again, my concern is just that there's not a contribution from a nonprofit, and there's plenty of businesses out there that are contributing toward the tiers that would say, hey, wait a minute, why are they receiving money when we, we haven't received it yet, especially in the south?
Well, explain in the bigger picture, what property tax dollars and sales tax dollars are used for the city as a whole?
We need this especially for economic development, we need it for growth, we need it for, to reduce the burden on our taxpayers as well. So when you see a growth in the property tax revenues and sales tax revenues, especially in contributions to tiers, any monies that are invested that help leverage the growth in those areas, help also to, when you start, when you, when you start looking at property tax revenues, as those revenues start coming in, you want to grow your tax base. You want to ensure that those monies are available.
What pays, where do the dollars come from that pay for our police and our fire?
It comes from the general fund, it comes from, from the taxpayers, and, and that's, that's the, the big issue. So we do have our, and that's a good point, Mayor, because we have fire and, and PD services that are provided, yet when you start looking at nonprofits, and mind you, nonprofits are there for a reason, and we're very blessed to have nonprofits in our community, but we do have to take into consideration that the, the monies that we do receive to, to fund, the public safety part of it does come from the general fund, it does come from property tax revenues, it does come from sales tax revenues as well.
I think the other issue that I want to make sure we talk about and visit the conversation is that one of the reasons why the tiers money, in my opinion, should not be used for nonprofits, is exactly that reason. They still use our fire, they still use our police, we still have to do street reconstruction, we still have many issues within this city. A general business, a business for profit, has no ability to apply for grants such as the area foundation, and there's a San Angelo Giving, or San Angelo Gives event coming up in May, that allows nonprofits to apply for this money. Business owners cannot apply to San Angelo Gives, only nonprofits. Nonprofits have already been given a great advantage by not having to pay for property taxes or sales tax dollars, and the government has created nonprofit status for those very reasons, so that they can, so that their funding supports their nonprofit, and they don't have to spend the money that regular businesses have to spend. I'm a big believer that our nonprofits add value to this community. They add a great value to this community, but they've also been given the advantage of no property tax commitment or sales tax commitment. Our greatest challenge in this city is coming up with the funds to pay for street repair, to pay for fire, to pay for police. Daniel, the property tax dollar, the sales tax dollars, are they eaten up by fire and police overhead?
They are, Mayor. The monies that we actually collect, when you start looking at property tax revenues, and mind you, when property taxes came into being, it really was to pay for public safety, we can't even cover public safety with the property tax revenues that come in. We have to supplement that with sales tax, sales tax revenues. So, so no, it's not even, even the property taxes we collect are not, is not even enough to pay for the public safety, we have to supplement with sales tax revenues.
And so we also have North Chadburn, which has a great need for being improved. There was a request made to start utilizing some of the tiers fund, which tiers, if you look at the language when you create a tiers project, is that those monies can be used to improve the infrastructure of a city. Many people believe that's the number one project that should be funded by tiers dollars, because if you improve, instead of picking winners and losers, if you take a street improvement project, and it's multiple streets, that the overall impact on that area will be the greatest impact for all businesses and all nonprofits on all those streets. When we start utilizing these monies to fund nonprofits, we are eliminating an opportunity for all businesses, including for-profit businesses that do put money into the pot, both sales tax dollars and property tax dollars. We have to look at this in a holistic perspective. We need to make decisions that improve a district, and improve the entire overall environment for all businesses and all nonprofits. The idea that this project would have a potentially economic impact on that district is questionable. I'm not sure that that's valid. It's certainly an easy thing to say, it's a harder thing to prove. This is not to say that this church is not an important part of that district. It's, it's a very important project for the people who attend that church. Is there signage or other things that exist for that church? Because I didn't see any signage, any anything that even designates that building as a church.
I think the applicant could probably answer that better than I can, but part of their proposal is to improve some of the lighting and signage for the building. I don't know if there's some there now, but there would be.
We have consistently said that we cannot use, we should not be using tiers funds for, for signage. I mean, it's been an overall part of the tiers program, that if a business cannot afford a sign, then tiers shouldn't be funding it. And the same thing with paving. We have said that tiers should not be paying for pavement or parking lots unless they is, unless there is a plan for landscaping to improve that parking. And those have been consistent in every single board meeting of tiers. So what I don't like us doing is going outside the language and the conversations we've had on a consistent basis, and all of a sudden change our perspective. This is emotional, and I know that there are going to be a lot of people who speak towards the emotional aspect of this, but we've got to look at it from a fiscal, fiscal responsible position, and we as city council are responsible for making fiscally sound policies, and making sure that those property tax dollars and sales tax dollars go to improving a district, go to improving the overall city, including the use of fire and police. I'm sure if that building caught on fire, there would be a lot of people who would be tickled to death that we have a fire department to put it out, or if there's crime. We already struggle, we already struggle as a city to fund the services that all citizens use and utilize. So I am registering, I, I support the church wanting to improve the facility, I do not support the use of tiers money to do that with. Other comments? Harry?
Unfortunately, I have to agree with the mayor on this. It wasn't many, many council meetings before that we talked about another nonprofit, that we, we really need to be focusing on the business that give back. And I'm sure this church and their, and the church members are very, very good people, and they really want to improve that particular area, but I can't see them using tiers funds. Just, I'm sorry, but those funds need to go to improving a business that will increase the taxes to support the police and fire department, because property taxes, quite honestly, don't do that. We have to have sales tax in order to, in order to make that, that whole fund. Have that whole fund work. So from my perspective, sometimes I don't align with the mayor, but I'm definitely going to on this one. I, I want, want to support businesses, and I'm sorry that we can't support the nonprofit.
Further public comment? Lucy?
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, I've, I've heard everything everyone has said. We knew the definition of tiers before we went ahead and approved the north side to be, the nonprofits to be eligible for the funds. I believe like the other people that are on the tiers board that stated, hey, this is policy right now. It may change in the future, but as of now, we should be able to approve this, these improvements in the north side. We wanted to, in, in town hall meetings, we stated, we want the north side to use their money. Now is the time, even though it's nonprofit, we're going to make it look better, we're going to make it more inviting, we're going to make it look like it's, it's starting to get on the road of looking better over there. I do not see why we cannot approve this, yet we can, yet we went ahead and gave the south side money from our tiers money on the north side. So for that reason, and I've read the letters that support this improvement on the north side for the tiers, so I am definitely for them approving the, the tiers money for the north side.
Yes, Tom?
A little just historical, and we've had this discussion before, where we've talked about another church and a building on 14th, but the reason nonprofits are actually eligible is, back in 2017, when we made the proposal, I was under the assumption there would be some development groups that come in as nonprofits, develop hotels, develop senior living communities, things, and then they turn them over to a private industry to sell for profit. That was the only reason, and at that time, you and I had a discussion, and you took it to, you know, nonprofits are non-eligible on the south zone. As a mistake, I did not let that go forward, but it was not under the pretense of what we're talking about, and I strongly agree with the mayor and Harry. With our consistency and how we've treated people, it's, we put something in where the economics pay back, and we've had this in discussions with zonings also, is nonprofits don't hit this area that generates revenue back for us. So with that, I'm going to fall back in line with y'all three.
Are there public, Larry?
You mentioned the four other tiers projects that we approved before. This council, every single person on here was very enthusiastic about the response from the north tiers and those businesses out there to use those funds. I, I know we were all happy about that, and we certainly want to continue that, but this, to my mind, is not the project to support.
All right, with that, may I have a motion for denying the use of tiers money for this project?
Second.
Second by Larry and by Tom. We'll open it up for public comment.
Good morning. I'm Reverend William J. McClendon II, pastor of Gethsemane Missionary Baptist Church, GTG, in single-member district number four. He talked about everything I had written down, so I'm just going to comment on some of the things y'all brought up. He talked about the police and fire department, and the funds for them. The church members pay taxes. You pay taxes, so the, so the money is going back. I don't understand why you opened the door for us. You actually sent us a letter back in 2006 or '07, when the tiers first stood up, inviting us in. So the door's been open, and now all of a sudden, when you see us coming, you want to close the door. I don't understand that. Somebody answer the question, please?
Well, I'll be, you just documented that as 2006, 2007. In 2017, we cut off half of the nonprofits, and for the second, we all pay taxes here. I mean, those of us at home, we do, and I, and I get that, and I I mean, those of us at home, we do, and I get that, and I get the mission you're trying to go, but I'm saying for us to be fair and consistent with people we've already denied in the past, I'm just digging to that point that nonprofits are not eligible in the tiers, and mainly because they don't provide an economic incentive to come back. I'm sure, and I've got several calls about this, Pastor Mack, but I have gone with, we have to be consistent, and this is a hard decision. At the end of the day, I'm sure both sides of this probably won't be happy, but it's a decision we make to be fair and consistent with what we do as a city.
Well, improving the church will be a testimony to the other businesses on Martin Luther King, to want to use some of this tiers money, because now they're going to see, oh, the churches are beautifying the buildings and the landscaping. You have several businesses out there, they're not doing anything. They need a little bit of encouragement, and that's what we're trying to do. That's what the church does. Thank you.
Craig Myers, single member district four. I've heard the words that seem to be almost contradictory, the way they're being used, holistic, fair, equitable, all kinds of things. If you're going to talk about fairness, you need to have a comparison. Downtown San Angelo, which we're very proud of, the people, the city, the businesses have done a marvelous job in recreating historic downtown San Angelo. There's a complaint because there's so much property, the vast majority, I think, in terms of dollar amounts of properties that do not pay taxes downtown. It's not-for-profit, and so they get the benefit of the city's services and everything else without paying taxes. But every business downtown has an advantage because of those. Every business is in the shadow of a not-for-profit or a non-tax-paying building that is well-maintained, that is better than any other business and property in business downtown. They are drawing crowds in because of the need to have medical care and services for city activities. They get the benefit of these facilities that the people in Blackshear and Reagan pay taxes on to support their business well-being. That's something that just, they have been seen as not paying taxes, not adding to tiers, but they are adding to the value incredibly in safety, in security, in stability, and profit of every business downtown, and they're being paid for other places. But just in terms of what the churches in San Angelo, on that side of the bypass, do, I think they do improve the business area and also take pressure off of the rest of the city. I preached the 63rd anniversary of Galilee Baptist Church a couple of weeks ago, and they're a church that has been there a long time. They are a church, like most of the churches up there, that are sustained by hundred, around 100 members or less in many instances, and it's very difficult. But they provide food for the people, they provide counseling for the elderly, they provide programs for the young people. I was at the installation of the pastor at St. Paul Baptist last week, and they're a church that does the same kind of thing. Gethsemane is across the street from a church called, excuse me, Wesley Trinity Methodist Church. There's a lot of concern downtown, every time there's an effort to provide housing for homeless people downtown, that that's going to hurt the business downtown if those people run around there. Wesley Methodist provides hundreds of meals every day for those people so they can stay uptown and not be down there bothering you. These churches, as not-for-profits, are providing services that the city does not have to pay. They are small entities, and what they would take away from taxes is just minimal in terms of the scope and the size of what's going to happen. Also, they are the anchors. You talk about, it's not been proven that they make a difference in terms of property values and business incentive. You look at them, they are the anchors in almost every block that they occupy. They are the people who make sure that not just that building and that facility and that parking lot, but the whole block is improved. You go on down where there are no churches, you find substandard residential houses there, vacant lots, and so as long as that happens, tiers is not going to help provide real incentive to attract business. These churches provide a service from which the city directly benefits. And one last thing, when you're talking about fairness to everybody, Historic Downtown is a good name, and we're so proud of it. Historic Blackshear has another context of its history. I served on the redress committee of the NAACP for 10 years. In recent years, 20 years, that neighborhood has been defined by redlining, by banks, by contracts from realtors and citizens in other parts of the town, so that people won't sell to people who are in the African-American community, businesses that are not paying minimum wage and are not providing services. So when you talk about fairness, giving a break to a neighborhood that desperately needs it, I think holistically is probably a really good deal.
Good afternoon again, Kim Henry from number three. And I am a social worker, so I advocate for nonprofits, of course, and I do agree nonprofits do have advantages. But I also really strongly believe in making sure that you're making informed decisions, so I wanted to share some facts with you. One is, yes, nonprofits do get grants. However, those grants don't go to beautification and making the buildings look better or help the facilities. They go to serve direct programs or services. There are very, very few grants nowadays for general operating support, which would include projects like this. Two, the city also offers money to businesses in a grant form known as a business plan competition, which is about $70,000 every year, which is ironically the same, almost near exact amount of what this project is proposing. Now, I understand, I understand the business plan competition is different than tax reinvestment. I understand that.
It's supported by sales tax dollars.
Yes, so I understand it's a different process, but I just, I would like you to keep that in mind. Also, you know, here's some numbers that I would, again, would like to share with you. One in eight jobs across Texas are provided by nonprofits. So when you impact the workforce, then you're impacting the property, the taxes, and the community. The nonprofit yearly growth rate is about 10%, and there are $216 billion spent in expenditures from nonprofits, and $110 billion in annual gross product, and this is just in Texas alone. Also, there are $4.89 billion in government dollars that are provided to nonprofits to help fill and bridge the gaps, which I'll talk about in a moment. Texas nonprofits have $300 billion in assets, and that includes properties. Again, I know nonprofits do not pay property, I get that, I understand that, but I want to show you how nonprofits do really impact the economy. It's extremely important. Businesses can also operate in a fiscal sponsorship, which is essentially operating and working with the nonprofit to do nonprofit work, where businesses can essentially get nonprofit grant funding if they are partnering with a nonprofit to do a project or a program. So they do have access, in a way, to those funds. And at the end of the day, as they've kind of already stated, nonprofits fill the gap. So whether it's COVID or it's homelessness, regardless, Mayor, with all due respect, you publicly called homeless people embarrassing to the city, and I guarantee you, the property value will be impacted if we do have the homeless people running around and not being put into a place or offered housing or anywhere that they could go. So if, you know, if nonprofits didn't have to fill these gaps, again, like COVID, homelessness, disability rights, the state assisted living, there's so many different things that nonprofits do that fill the gaps. If they didn't have to fill the gaps, then they possibly would have the money, they would most likely have the money to help beautify and work on their projects, their facilities and their internal needs. But again, their money goes to directly serving the people. When you serve the people, the workforce, the economy, you are impacting the taxes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Want to pull the microphone down a bit so you can talk into it.
Thank you. Okay. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be before you today. My name is Evelyn Smith. I am a minister at Gethsemane Missionary Baptist Church, and I'm in SMD five. I wanted to explain to you how I got involved in the tiers program. I was here at a city council meeting July of last year for a totally different subject, and I heard about the tiers program. So I came up when it was opened up to the public, and I asked a question, were there any funds for nonprofit organizations to improve their area? And they told me no, and explained why. So I sat down. So the next meeting I came back to, I decided I wanted to ask, were there any funds around to help nonprofit organizations to beautify the area? But I didn't get a chance to ask because it was already on the books, again, for nonprofit to be approved, to be determined whether nonprofit could be available, those funds be available for them. And I'm going, oh, praise God for that, amen. So that was passed on August the 16th of last year, that nonprofit organization could put in an application for the tiers funding. And so I was a little disheartened when I heard about that it was being asked to walk back on that. And we are not a church that's just trying to fix our church, because we're trying to be self-sufficient. We are now trying to raise money and funding for a $50,000 bathroom that we need for handicap, to get, revitalize our bathroom for handicaps. So we try to be self-sufficient on our own. But what we want to do right now, we're trying to make a significant impact in San Angelo and in the north side area. We want to keep San Angelo beautiful on both sides. And the south side have really done a great job with downtown. I'm originally from San Angelo, I was raised here, and I remember when downtown had Levine's and all the other little stores downtown, and so to keep it up has really been, has really been profitable for the community, and I love it. I mean, I understand what you guys have done there. But again, one of the criterias for the project was to provide connection between activities, which has already been stated by several people who come up here already, the things that we do as nonprofit in the community that we don't really get any funds for. And so it also says, improve pedestrian and vehicle infrastructure. Now, we have a bus stop that's on the corner, right on the corner of our church parking lot. We had no idea that that bus stop was going to be put there, but right now, the parking lot is like a detriment to anybody that comes and sit there. We have people over there all the time, walking across our parking lot, waiting for the bus, and there's things on the parking lot that could be, it's non-safe for people to come. And so that's for the public, that's really not for us. So we're trying to make these areas for the public. It also says, strengthen the focus area identity. We're trying to change that. Support the goals of making the area a cultural, leisure, and tourist destination. Well, we have people from the chicken farm in that area, we have Francos who have a lot of people over there, and rodeo people who come through, but you know what? Those people pass through. They don't want to stop on the north side, and that's bad for the businesses, because the area looks dilapidated and rundown, okay? Now, you can have a business that's improved their building, and the building looks good, but that doesn't make people want to stop there if you have a dilapidated area and everything else looks rundown. They pass through. So how does that help a business if people don't want to stop at the business, to do business? So I have friends on the south side who come to me and ask me, you know, that area over there, because we have functions over there, different, all different functions, not just at our church, but different things going on, and they ask me, is it safe to go over there? You know, it doesn't look so nice over there. So anyway, so the goal of the tiers program is to fund projects that bring new business and positive impact into the area, and that's what we're trying to do and help the business do. And the more people that come into the area, the church, you know, the church people will be more comfortable coming over to that area and make the area look more beautiful. And there is a lot of traffic on Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Could you just wrap up your comments, please?
I'm sorry, what?
Would you wrap up your comments, please?
Okay. I also want to point out that in our packet that we submitted, we have Western Skies and Window Depot, who also stated that it would improve their business if the area was improved. I also want to say that at the north side, every time we, the nonprofit use the businesses, we get the beautification of our area, but some funds, the funds go back into the business. Like Window Depot, we use them, if all the other nonprofit use them, the funds go back into Window Depot. That is a business, and that is helping the business. And also, just wrapping it up real quick, I want to say that we submitted our application that we want, that we believe we are eligible for each project criteria, incentive type, and qualifying award ranking requirements. And we propose that the belated buildings in the area need to be improved for the overall fiscal impact. We're trying to find out what is, trying to make the significant impact of the area, and it's not just for, it's not just for our church. So if we want to keep San Angelo beautiful, let's try to do a both side. And I understand about the tiers program money, but, you know, we do pay taxes, we do support the businesses over there.
Thank you very much.
Okay? All right, well, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Evelyn.
Bidding to all. My name is Theodore Boone. I am sort of a CEO of a nonprofit organization. I think, before we go any further, I think we need to pause for a moment and look at nonprofit organization as a benefit to society and to our community. Think we need to look at them from a different view because many of them are the backbone of our community. They provide services, not only that, they bring about creativity, not only that, but they care for people. All of these nonprofit organizations are not churches. The majority of them that we're talking about serves your children. As a matter of fact, how many people out here are engaged in activities with nonprofit organization that pays big taxes? I want everybody that pays and support nonprofit organizations to stand up. If you're a part of, you support, you donate to it, you go to it, I want you to stand How many of you do it? How many of your children have been served by someplace? How many of your relatives? How many of your employees? How many people in the city, San Angelo, is this a nonprofit organization? Do you get paid? Do you have backup services? I'm not talking about a church. I'm talking about people versus commerce. Commerce is for the benefit of a small portion, but nonprofit organizations are for the benefit If we can take money and invest in bars, if we can take money from whatever taxes and pay for activities that is not for the well-being of community and society, how do we have the? well-being of community and society, how do we have the nerve to turn down nonprofit organizations? I am a part of one. I have a house. I pay taxes. Everybody that go to these churches pay taxes if they have homes. They contribute to society. I'm standing here because I have a vision. And my vision is to see an area that has been robbed of resources restored with the capacity to have identity. If you look at Martin Luther King Drive, I'm going to start calling it the Martin Luther King Corridor. I call it a corridor because along Martin Luther King Drive are probably more nonprofit organizations, and some of them are owned by the city. But the problem in the area is it's dark. There's no light. So people don't come there because of fear. But I think it's time to change the story. It's time to invest in some people who need some encouragement and resources to see somebody of ourselves that take interest in the community and are willing to make sacrifices to see a change come. There is a cluster that started at a place where the community was divided. Nobody think about that. There were plenty of black businesses in San Angelo before the freeway came through and severed it. Give us an opportunity. $70,000 in a billion-dollar business. Think about it. Think about it. How much money have you been spending in that area? How many of the tax dollars that come naturally into that area goes to improve it? We want it improved. I said I wasn't going to say anything, but I'm going to say something. And what I'm going to say is, three, five years ago, we started an initiative ourself. We didn't go to anybody. We didn't go to anybody trying to get resources to make an improvement in the facility. We have brought it up. We put in our own windows. We paid our own money because we believe that if people can see positive changes, they will participate in it, and the quality of life will change because people have hope that their efforts are not in vain. I hear it ringing.
Thank you very much.
May I say one more thing?
One more thing.
That one more thing is that there's a culture on MLK that need to be resurrected. There's a culture in that side of the town that need to be restored. There's a culture that if not invested in, you will also be a part of the responsibility of not bringing back to pass something that is going to die if the investment is not made.
Thank you very much.
There's a cultural. One last thing.
You've asked for one last thing already. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Early Spears, City Member District Five. Good morning, Madam Mayor, Council. This is a very interesting discussion, and I want to first go back to last summer when some of us were walking in the heat in North Angelo, trying to solicit those business owners to apply, apply, apply for tiers funding. We also requested town hall meetings, which you all graciously agreed to. We had those town hall meetings. And we determined, we being those of us who were involved, that there was an educational deficiency in terms of them understanding how to apply, and their fear of applying for those funds. Now, downtown is part of the southern tiers area, and we know that there are a lot of nonprofits, primarily churches, in the downtown area. So we've had this discussion before. But as pointed out, nonprofit does not necessarily just mean church. And I think perhaps that's part of the factor here that we keep honing in on this particular applicant, is that it is a church. There are other nonprofits throughout the city, and there are other business, personally-owned businesses and city facilities. I question why it is, in the seven years that I've been here, there seems to always be a challenge when we want to do something on the north side, except for when I saw the money that came through Department of Transportation and improved the streets in the northern area of the city. I recall having a discussion, Mr. Valenzuela, with you about putting park, excuse me, putting benches for bus stops. We took care of that. I remember that. But the money that is being discussed here is $70,000. As has been stated, I believe that what this particular nonprofit, I'm not going to call it a church, I'm just going to say this nonprofit, will do to feed into positive energy that you've already heard can be done in that building. It will start a whole idea, a movement of others, whether they are personal business owners or others. You know, we had a lot of issues trying to get approval last year with getting restrooms at Martin Luther King Park. And I'm still waiting on that to be finalized because of the slow process that is used in the city for permitting and things of that nature. People are asking. And we raised our own money for that, the community, those nonprofits, those personal businesses, citizens across the city. We raised our own funds for that, over $270,000. And here we are, a year later, and we still don't have restrooms. So I'm curious, and I know that you don't have to answer because we're in this public comment period, but I'm very curious as to why it is that we have to go through so much of a problem whenever we're trying to do things according to the process in the northern side of San Angelo. I don't understand it, and perhaps one day someone can explain it to me. The current process for tiers dollars for North Angelo allows for nonprofits. It doesn't say churches, social service organizations, or any of that. It says nonprofits, that the nonprofits are eligible. I think we also need to be concerned that this has been heard by another group of citizens that you trust their judgment on the tiers board, who unanimously basically agree to this application. And here we are before you, asking you to vote your three-fourths, or whatever the requirement is. And again, I want us to understand and not just look at this applicant as a church. That may be creating a problem for some of you, because we want to keep church and state separate. I get it. But we need to make sure that we understand that this is an applicant that is a nonprofit, and the current policy allows for consideration of granting funds to a nonprofit in that section of the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? If you've spoken once, you cannot come forward again. Each individual's only allowed to speak once. Seeing no public comment, further public comment, we will take a vote.
Mayor, I'd like to make one more comment. I wanted to just let you know that in the north tiers funds, there's $1.8 million that it would be a shame if we can use 71,000 of it on the north side to support this item. That's what I wanted y'all to know.
Thank you, Lucy. May I have a motion for denial of approving the funds for this project?
Sorry, made the motion.
You made a motion, a second public comment. All right, we'll take a vote, starting with Tommy.
No.
Tom?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Wait a minute.
No, wait a minute. This is denial.
Denial, so I say yes.
Denying it.
Yes, denying it.
Tommy?
No.
Larry? Lucy? I mean Karen?
Accept.
And Lucy?
Okay, now let's get this taken care of correctly. We're denying it correctly.
We're denying it. So vote yes.
To deny.
To deny it.
No.
Right. It is denied, no, so.
Wait a minute then, wait, wait, wait.
I support denying it.
I do not.
Okay.
I want it to go, I want to approve it.
And I also am voting with Lucy.
All right, so the motion, so it is a four to three vote, which means it is four denying using the money. That's the final vote. Four to three. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item is considered terminating the aquatic plant specialist agreement between the city of San Angelo and Mr. Kenneth C. Landon for the operation of the International Water Lily Collection. And Carl, you're on.
Carl White, Parks and Recreation. We're seeking approval to terminate the aquatic plants specialist agreement, also known as the Water Lily Collection Agreement. The city entered into this third agreement with Mr. Landon back in 2018. Mr. Landon passed in July 14, 2021. The collection was then overseen by his estate, primarily executor Larry Jolly, who passed, who also passed February 23, 2023. Another executor of Mr. Landon's estate exists, Mrs. Jennifer Jackson. I believe she's here at the meeting today. The existing agreement ends September 30, 2024. It's unknown, unknown when Mr. Landon's estate will settle. Staff recommends terminating immediately and beginning with a new agreement. Mr. Landon was an expert at many things, especially running an international water lily collection. He did have a fault. He never wanted to talk about succession of running the collection. When he passed, there was no one to take over except for his estate. Thankfully, Mr. Jolly did work with Mr. Landon for several years. I've known him to work with Mr. Landon for 14 years. I've known him that long. And Mr. Jolly did a decent job of running the collection, hiring some folks to maintain it and to clean up the operations and get it going. It was not at the level of what Mr. Landon did, and, but he did do a decent job. We're at the point now, since Mr. Jolly has passed, that we need to terminate the agreement, existing agreement, and work towards the next agreement. Time is of the essence. Thankfully, we are in the dormant season, but we must continue the collection, get it set up and running for this next season. So we don't have much time.
So when you are asking us to terminate, what does that termination mean? Go through, is it just the agreement with Larry Jolly maintaining it, or what are we terminating?
The existing agreement we had with Mr. Landon.
Mr. Landon?
Yes.
So he's deceased, so sort of automatic, isn't it?
It was automatic. It defaulted to his estate, but I believe we do have grounds to terminate immediately.
Currently, they were, the city was basically honoring that agreement that transferred to the estate, and so the estate was maintaining and operating the collection under that agreement. But since so many changes have occurred, you know, we have concerns about that, and it's time for the city to enter into a new, fresh agreement that gives true direction and safeguards to maintaining that collection into the future.
Well, what I know is so many people have reached out and have been very concerned about the future of the International Lily Garden. It is a treasure and something that adds a lot to the city of San Angelo. So I know that we need direction and a path forward to make sure that the International Lily Pad is protected and that there's a plan for continuing support for that.
And that is part of what the second, my next item is.
Okay, so by terminating this aquatic plant specialist agreement, it allows us to move forward to creating a new agreement with another person. Is that correct?
With authorization to negotiate and execute that agreement, yes.
So this isn't a negative against the Lily Garden. It is a path forward, correct?
Correct. We know it's an asset. It is an attraction to the city, and we also want to honor Mr. Landon's legacy. He was a master at what he did, and perhaps we can even name the collection after Mr. Landon at some point. So we would like to do those two things, continue on and honor Mr. Landon.
All right, do, does anyone on council have any questions or comments concerning this item?
Just a couple. I, like you, Mayor, have had more than a couple of phone calls from citizens who are very supportive of the collection, and it's an economic development tool. For a couple of our developers here in town, when they're trying to attract business to town, they, in fact, use that as a point of pride in showing one feature of our community. So in my opinion, Mayor, based on the timing, if I understand correctly, Carl, we are in an open window now that things need to be happening for the collection to be able to be available to the public this year. And if we don't do that, then we could potentially not have the collection available for the public to use this year. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
So, Mayor, I am in support of terminating this agreement and moving forward with a new agreement, just to get us where we need to be. I'll make the motion to terminate the agreement.
Any public comment?
Good morning. My name is Lori DeCello, and I am a member of District Six. And I also have served on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I was there when we did the last contract for Ken Landon, and the contract was given to a person that was experienced, that knew what he was doing, that had the education and the knowledge to produce a lily display. Now, the executors of the estate at Ken Landon have tried to continue this. They have done a job and produced a display, but I believe that we should be able to see a better display for our tax dollars. And in order to do this, I believe that we need an experienced person to produce the lilies for us. And in order to do that, I'm in agreement with dissolving the contract and going after another one.
Good boy.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
My name is Lori Santa Anna. I worked for Larry for about 27 years.
Just a little bit, so you can speak into it a little more.
And Mr. Jolly did a great job on the lilies. I don't want for the contract to be terminated, because even after he passed, that it hasn't been, not even a month, we have been working. The people that was working for him in the past have still been working, cleaning the pools. The pools are clean at this time, except for one, and the one that the city needs to clean. Those are the only two that are not clean. But we are moving. But we are moving and doing everything and keeping everything up, continue. If anything has to be done, I think that we need more time. But everything is in place to put the lilies back in the pools. Mr. Jolly left everything, I mean, safe. And I am involved because I'm in the, I'm the one that translate for the Spanish lady that is involved in taking care of those lilies. And she did a great job for the past two years. And it has been.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Hello?
Hello?
My name is Jennifer Jackson. I am the remaining estate executor. I was also Kenneth Landon's goddaughter. This is very hard for me. And Lourdes is correct in the fact that the process of maintaining and caring for the lilies is still going on. The workers have been down there cleaning the ponds, getting ready for the transition to take place, to get the new lilies in the ponds. There are lilies that are going to go in. I am not Kenneth Landon. Nobody is. He is the one that could provide a first-class lily display, as you guys requested for him to do. I can say that we can do everything that we can to continue doing the lilies, to provide as much as we are capable of doing with whatever help we can get. I cannot 100% guarantee you that it is going to be a first-class production as Ken would have given you. I do believe that the lilies do not need to go away. That was his dream, that was his legacy, that was his passion. He wanted it to continue no matter what, for visitors to be able to go and visit, for the community to be able to go and have family time with their kids, with their out-of-town family, to show them what we have in San Angelo. It was something that we didn't have before that was brought here because of him. So I don't think they need to go away. I do think that there's probably other paths that need to be considered for it to be able to continue at the level that it has been before. Ken did an awesome job. He worked with a lot of the city parks personnel along the way. And they have experience, many years of experience in maintaining the lily ponds, the area, the flower beds, everything that's down there for everybody to see. I'm not opposed to terminating.
There'll never be another Ken Landon, and we understand that, and you understand that. But what we do want to do is to make sure there's a path forward that Ken would be proud of and that continues his legacy and his talent that he so willingly supported the city of San Angelo with. And we thank you, and I know it's hard, and I know it's emotional. But thank you for coming forward today. And, and we're going to do the best we can to make sure Ken would be proud. Further public comments? Seeing none, then we'll take a vote. All those in favor of terminating item E, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven zero. We'll now go to item G, first reading and public hearing of a, oh, sorry. Okay, yes. Item F, consider approving an aquatic plant specialist agreement with Mr. Taylor Chase Trumbly for the operation and maintenance of the international wali, water lily collection and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Again, Carl, you're on.
Yes, we're seeking just that authorization to negotiate and execute a new agreement with Mr. Tombley, Chase Tombley. Mr. Tombley has nearly 20 years of experience, of experience working with the collection and Mr. Landon. I've, I've been here 23 years, I've seen him down there many times. He definitely has that work experience with, directly with Mr. Landon. And he will also soon finish a Master of Science in agriculture. Staff has full confidence in Mr. Tombley's knowledge, skills, and abilities to operate the collection to the expected standards. And, and in a matter of terms, we could work on a two- or three-year term agreement, or it could be a shorter term, maybe one-year agreement, in which time we work on a request for a proposal to call for other experts who may be interested in running the collection, which could also be Mr. Tombley, which would give the city time to do that, as well as Mr. Tombley time to, to see if this is what he wants to do for his future as well.
Is he interested in, in moving forward with an agreement?
Yes, he is. And he's also present today. And in terms of compensation, I think it should remain what is budgeted because he would have to purchase new fertilizers, some additional stock, and some other materials.
Questions for Carl? Yes, Tom?
Carl, going back to Mr. Tommy, what you brought up before, and he can do this, can we make sure we have a B-team in place to? I mean, whether that be a assistant or somebody else in case of something that would happen? We wouldn't be in a situation like this. Make sure they appoint somebody that's supporting staff that can step in? Should they be not able to fulfill the duties for a period of time?
Yes, staff can step in, but also Mr. Tombley's married to, with Melody, and she also has more than 20 years' experience with, working with Mr. Landon.
We got two A-teams.
Yes.
Good enough, I'll shut up. We're good.
Any further questions or comments for Carl?
Yes.
Larry, go ahead.
I've heard plenty of stories about the care that Mr. Twombly has taken of the collection. A lot of it is voluntary, as I recall in the past. He's stepping into enormous shoes. I think I would favor a one-year contract to see how this works out. I have little doubt that, that he will do a fantastic job, but it allows us some flexibility in where we see the collection going.
It is what have, is the contract that's being brought forward for us to approve? Is it a one-year or a two-year?
We're, at this point, asking for authorization to negotiate and execute it. So if you give us direction in terms of the term, we'll definitely take that as part of the negotiations.
Well, my concern, to talk about the work involved, because this has to have an ongoing plan. It cannot be start and stop. And I don't think starting and stopping with multiple different persons or personalities is the right thing to do. It has to stay focused, and it has to have a plan. And when you're talking about plants and things like the lilies, it takes more than just a, I mean, we're already in the month of almost April, right? And so that lilies are good from April till when? When we start to pull them?
They, they start blooming late April, depends on when it starts warming up. But basically, late April through the end of September, or even early October, depending on the weather. I'm, I'm definitely okay with going a longer term, if that's the direction council wants to give us.
Well, I'd like to hear from other council members.
I want to hear what Teresa has to say, but then I think I still have a question.
Yeah, one of the options, excuse me, that we have is that we can do a one-year term with the option to extend for two to five additional terms. And that way, it's basically a long-term contract unless something goes off the rails, and then we can terminate it after that first year, usually with a notice period. So that's an option as well.
Okay, that, that answers part of my question. Do we have something in the contract, Teresa, that should there just be, let's just call it neglect, and not really taking care of the collection? It may be a subjective statement in there, but do we have a way in the contract that if something goes awry, that we sense, hey, this isn't going well, and we're not to the end of the contract, that we can terminate that contract with 30 days' notice, 60 days' notice?
It's actually 90 days' notice if we just want to terminate. If it's because there is neglect, or somebody's not carrying out the required service, that can be an immediate termination that we would bring to you.
I would like Mr. Tombley to please come forward and introduce yourself and make all of council aware of who you are, and just talk about your background and, and all the time and energy that you've invested in the international lilies at this point.
Absolutely, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Taylor Twombly. I want to start by saying, my wife and I did work with Ken for more than 20 years. My wife started in 2000, I started in 2004. I guess what I'd like to do, I, I was going through some of my old documents last night, just kind of reminiscing, and Ken did a lot of things. And one of the things that he did was he, he really cared about the people that cared about him. And I've really dedicate, I've desi, I've dedicated a lot of my life to understanding horticulture, anything in the botanical sciences field, so much so that I've pursued a master's degree in it. And in the pursuit of that master's degree, I went to Ken, and I actually, I obtained a letter of recommendation signed by him illustrating some of my duties, ethics, and aptitude while working down there for 17 years. Ken meant the world to me. And it's also my goal not to just carry on his legacy and to honor him. But I personally would like to see a path forward with the lily ponds. You know, I see on the monitors that we've got Nymphaea, Texas Dawn, official state water lily of Texas. Now, I mean, I've given tours countless times, talking about it to everybody, telling them what it is. But, you know, it, it's just to be able to look at that and say, hey, man, I worked with that. That's, that's pretty cool. So, you know, I can talk about my, my, my experience. I mean, I can throw out some technical terms. But, but really, you know, when you think about it from a big picture, this is a jewel of San Angelo. This is an oasis in the desert. And I think it's important to not just look at, you know, the next couple of years, but where does it go in perpetuity? That's, that's my goal. I'd also like to take a moment to, if y'all have any questions, what can I do? What can, how can, what can I answer for you?
Tommy?
Mr. Twombly, do you have some thoughts in mind for succession if the unthinkable were to happen?
So, yes.
Beyond even your, your, your spouse? Do you, do you have some other thoughts that you could share with, with the council here?
I do. How my wife got involved, and which is how I got involved. Robert Price was the biology teacher for Central High School. That happened in 2000. What I would like to do is I'd like to work with the school districts to bring down some more students. I mean, I can't name any one person right now, and there may be better qualified individuals moving forward. But if we can work with not just any school district, but all school districts, potentially Angelo State University, I'd very much like to get the university involved. I think it would be an awesome, just opportunity to, to really bring in the, the scientific field and then look at potential candidates. I mean, think, I mean, you have a, you have an oasis that is its own self-sustaining, well, not necessarily self-sustaining, but it's, it's its own ecosystem, right? You have an opportunity to bring down anybody who works in the agricultural field or anybody who works in the botanical sciences field to train in this area. And it also gives the city an opportunity to look at potential candidates moving forward. I mean, think about anybody who does any kind of, um, trainings, I mean, everybody who goes to the master's degree has to undergo some sort of, of, not necessarily residency, but internship, you know? This, this gives the city the opportunity to look at candidates in the future.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? I like the idea that we would have a one-year with the additional two-year window option on it. I think one year's too short on this because we're already mid-season on the lily season, if you will. So I, I think that's too short-sighted. So I definitely would like to see the two-year within, or the one-year with an option of two more years. And then, at that point, you might have a lot of new ideas for us in terms of other things that need to be done, et cetera. And we want to keep that conversation open. And we want to see the lily garden continue to grow and prosper and continue to be the asset that it is. And I know under your leadership, I have great confidence that that's going to happen.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Second by Larry. Any public comment concerning this item?
Was that for two years?
One year with two-year additional.
Okay.
All right, so with that, Laura, you want to come forward? Yes.
Yes, this is Lori DeCello again. The reason why I wanted to come up here is because that was one of the things when I first started as part of the advisory board, was to try to work with Ken to produce succession plan. And it scared him. But after listening to Mr. Tombley, I think that more people will be interested, will be able to get. That's exactly what we want. If we can make it an educational thing, it would be fabulous.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven zero. We will now go to item G, first reading and public hearing of inordinance to abandon the approximately 20-foot by 507-foot unimproved alleys in Block 39 and 40 miles addition between Fourth and Fifth Street and North Oaks, North Magdalen, and Pecan Street. John, you're on.
Thank you, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. As you mentioned, this is just a request to abandon two alleys that were platted, basically, probably 100 years ago. And they were never constructed, and so these properties are all vacant, undeveloped. And you can see here the two alleys between basically oaks, all the way over to Pecan, and then between Fourth and Fifth Streets. So two blocks, the full alley within two blocks. Again, neither one of those have ever been constructed as an alley. As you'll see, there are no utilities or any other obstructions. The south half of both is owned by the applicant. And then you can, it's a little hard to see, but there's a little piece here that's also owned by the applicant. The remainder at the north end of this block and the entirety of, of the north of that block is owned by the state of Texas. There is a rail line that runs right through the middle of that property. This abandonment of the alley won't affect that at all. It's not within the right of way. At least on this portion, TexDOT will be offered their half of that alley through the process that we go through once the alley's abandoned. They're able to claim their half or not. If they don't claim it, then the applicant may claim the whole thing if, if they choose to do that. As I mentioned, there are no utilities, it is vacant. Here's an aerial photo of the area. You can see the railroad track that runs through there. But again, that's not within the alley or the property to be abandoned. So I won't read through all of these, I think I've mentioned most of them already. We do ask, you know, typically to find what is the public benefit of this. Basically, it's removing the obligation for the city to ever maintain anything within that alley. It also allows that to be incorporated into the adjacent property for future development that could become taxable in the future.
The question people have asked me is, the following, is that when we take what is city-owned property, alleyway, for example, and we allow for someone to ask to do what this is being allowed to do, what do, what do we charge them? Because it's obviously, they benefit and they gain more property, which increases the value of their property because they get additional land and have the potential to sell it for additional increased revenue because the property's larger. In fact, benefits the development of that property in a much better way. So what is it that someone has to pay the city? Or does any, is there any fees or any expense for the person who's asking for this property to be abandoned?
Yes, in fact, one of the, the first condition on all abandements is payment of the assessment formula. It's in the city's fee schedule, so it's not, it's not a straight purchase of the property, but it's not a straight fee either, it's not like a $100 fee. It is based on the value of the surrounding properties. So it's, it's basically a per-acre dollar amount that is based on the value of the surrounding properties, but it's not the full value because the property owner, even as it being an alley, they maintains... full value, because the property owner, even as it being an alley, they maintains, the adjacent properties maintain some of the underlying rights. Off the top of my head, I don't know what the exact calculation of that is, but it is a percentage of the value of the property based on the surrounding properties.
And I ask it because we have a lot of requests lately for abandonment of alleyways, and once again, it adds value to that property, gives them greater abilities, which is good, because we want it developed, but I just wondered what we ask the applicant to pay for?
And that's actually calculated after an abandonment, because it takes our real estate staff, they have to go out and do property research on all the surrounding properties and values from the appraisal district, so we typically don't do that at this point. If this is approved, that's the next step, that they will go out and do all of those values and calculate what that fee is. And so that's a number we don't have today, but it is a, it's not insubstantial, it is based on the surrounding property values. I'll add that our public work staff is generally in favor of abandoning these alleys, particularly ones that haven't been constructed. Technically, we're responsible to go out and maintain and mow those alleyways and all that, so it actually removes a burden from the city in terms of taxpayer resources having to go out and maintain those, particularly one like this, that there are no utilities, no water lines, anything within that abandoned alley, or potentially abandoned alley. So it is something that comes as a recommendation from staff as well.
All right, for the questions, yeah, go ahead.
In my district, I move to approve as presented.
Seconded by Tom. Any public comment concerning this item? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving Item G, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven zero. Item H, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance to rezone properties from the lot manufacturing zoning district to the general commercial zoning district being Point 951 acres, located at the northeast intersection of West Fourth Street and North Bryant, and addressed as 402 North Bryant.
So again, as you read, this is rezoning from lot manufacturing to general commercial, and I think that'll show better on a... This is just a concept plan of what they want to do on the property, basically retail kinds of things. I'll just remind you what I always do when an applicant presents something like this, you're approving the zoning and anything allowed in the zoning, you're not approving this particular layout, but they are looking at a couple of... The current proposal is for a couple of drive-through facilities. I believe one's an oil change type facility, and the other is a restaurant. We did send out our notices, 17, none response, no responses in favor or in opposition. This is an area that historically was zoned manufacturing because of its proximity to the rail line. However, this corridor of Bryant, as you know, is largely commercial. All of the things that are there currently, even within these lot manufacturing district, are commercial. There is adjacent general commercial, so it really makes sense. It actually probably makes sense for a larger area to be rezoned, but this is the applicant's request is general commercial on that particular property.
Questions for John?
Move to approve as presented.
Wait, Tom?
No, we're good, we're good.
All right, so there's a motion for approval, seconded by Lucy. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven zero. There's no closed session today, so we will move into the follow-up and administrative issues. So we'll move to Item AB, 8B, consider approving various board nominations, the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, Bambi Aker, SMD 5 to a second term ending January 2025. The Fort Concho Museum Board, Penny Roberts, SMD 5 to a first term. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Emily Jane Cowan, SMD 1 to a first term ending December 2024. Do I have a motion for approval of those board positions? Motion to approve. Thank you, Karen. Seconded by Lucy. All those, any public comment?
There's nothing to read.
And there's nothing to hear. Public comment, seeing none, then we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion for approval of those board nominations is seven zero. And with that, may I have a motion?
I'll move.
And seconded, any public comment? With that, let's take a vote. All in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. This meeting is adjourned.